Well, good evening, everyone. It's good to have you together. And this is our last town hall gathering on Wednesday evening. We began well over, oh, about fourteen fifteen months ago, actually, in April of 2020. And since then, other than Ash Wednesday and a couple others, we haven't missed a Wednesday. I'm grateful to all of you for your attentiveness, being part of this online community. For me, it's been a really wonderful and effective and educational way to be together in spite of the pandemic. And I'm grateful to all of our presenters. And I think it's wonderful that we have the opportunity tonight to, you know, end this series with hearing from our friends at Los Trumpus. Many of us are aware of the, of what goes on there, but only vaguely. We see your residents from Los Trumpus beautifying our city. And it's very inspiring for us, but I really am looking forward to hearing both the history as well as the future of Los Trumpus with your plan for a new facility. So I want to welcome Dan and Mike and Joe. And I'll let you take the ball and from here and introduce us to your wonderful work.
And don't forget.
I'm muted.
I, I, you know, we've been doing this for about as long as you have, about fifteen months now, and still can't get used to unmuting. And I want to thank you, Father John, for such a wonderful introduction. And I'm very excited. I didn't know that we were your last town hall. So I have to say, I'm very honored to be a part of your last town hall, your virtual town hall meetings. And very excited to tell you a little bit about Los Trumpus, who we are and what we do. And as Father John said, our future going forward is very exciting. So I will say that I do like, usually in our presentations, if you have a question, pop right up with the question. I can do at the end, or I could do in between. I just don't like people to forget what they wanted to ask and so forth. So go ahead and ask any, anytime. I also want to give a shout out to Sandy Gritzer, who, whose daughter-in-law worked at Los Trumpus for a very long time. And hi, Sandy, how are you? And also, I will be presenting with Joe Cashel, who is our Director of Day Programs and Adult Residential Services, and our Board President, Mike Collier, who's with us today. And they'll jump in when they have information to share. Sound good?
It does. And Dan, by the way, just to let our attendees know that in your bottom of your screen where it says reactions, there is a little function where you can raise your hand by clicking on that. So if you do have a question during the time, you can click on that, raise hand.
Thank you. And I also add, also add, if you want to put something in chat, a question in chat, I'll try to keep an eye on that for, for everybody throughout the, throughout the presentation.
Thank you, Joe. We try to be as organized as possible. We've been doing this for a while ourselves. And Joe will talk a little bit about that and how we're using Zoom to support the people that we serve. So a little bit about Los Trumpus. Our mission is that we support adults with developmental disabilities to discover their capabilities and to lead full lives in their homes, at work, and in the community. Now, that hasn't always been the case. In, in the past, we have also served children. And I will get to that in a little bit as well. But first, I think it's important to understand what is a developmental disability? Because I do get questions all the time from people, oh, can you serve so-and-so that have, you know, that has dementia or Alzheimer's or what have you? But a developmental disability is a disability that is related during the developmental years before the age of twenty-two. And it will usually cause, result in major impairments of cognitive and/or social functioning during that time period. And they do have five major broad categories. And intellectual disability is probably the one that most people understand. Intellectual disability used to go by a different name, a name that we don't use anymore because it's highly offensive. But it is a cognitive disability where an individual may have an IQ that's below seventy and has difficulty with understanding broad concepts, or also difficulty with their social functioning, as it says there. Cerebral palsy is another area. And that will often occur at the time, right before birth, during birth, or right after birth. Also can cause intellectual disability, but also physical disability. So you will see a lot of individuals with contractures, or in a wheelchair, or requiring assistive devices. But it doesn't mean that all people with cerebral palsy have an intellectual disability. Actually, I will say in my master's program, which I do have a master's in rehabilitation counseling. In my master's program, my absolute favorite professor, doctor, actually was a person with cerebral palsy. So we do serve people with cerebral palsy, both high functioning and low functioning. Epilepsy is a big one. So epilepsy that occurs before the age of twenty-two. And oftentimes, again, it, it's not just any diagnosis of epilepsy, but a diagnosis of epilepsy that does cause problems with social functioning. And oftentimes, it's usually paired with intellectual disability. And then, of course, autism spectrum disorder, autism spectrum disorder. And I will get into that in a little bit, but obviously has to do with a lot of the sensory issues for individuals, sometimes is paired with intellectual disability, and it runs on a spectrum. If, as they say, if you know a person with autism, you know a person with autism. Because autism will affect every individual very differently. You will have what's called high-level autism, what they used to call Asperger's, all the way down to very, very low functioning autism, or what we would call profound or severe impacts of autism. And that's where you'll see a lot of behavioral issues. And where do those behavioral issues come from? Lack of ability to actually process sensory information around them. And so if you can imagine, the lighting, fluorescent lighting, which our facility was full of fluorescent lighting, that flicker rate that's constantly in the background. We get a little irritated with it, but if you imagine that fluorescent lighting flickering constantly, plus the noise of everybody else moving around, talking, laughing, giggling, doing their things, plus maybe a TV or a radio going on in the background, or you have cars moving outside. Imagine that each of those, each of those sensory inputs is coming at you at the same level, a hundred percent. And you can't filter anything, any one thing out. So you'll hear what we are learning is more people are able to actually discuss what they feel about autism, or what their experience with autism is. You'll hear them say that I can't filter everything out. You might be talking to me, but that noise or sound in the background is coming at me at the same intensity and same level. So it makes it very difficult for people to concentrate, focus, learn. And also autism will often be paired with an intellectual disability. So you'll hear about people like Mark Zuckerberg, who, who has stated that, you know, there's or there's suspected autism, or you heard about Elon Musk saying that he has high-level autism. Well, you know, these are the folks that have some sensory issues and also have a difficulty connecting with individuals, but not at the extreme level that we would normally see at Los Trumpus. And then, of course, the other category is the catch-all, any condition that's similar, that's similar to any of these that happens before the age of twenty-two and would, would impair somebody's social or cognitive functioning. And I saw that there was a question in the chat.
Oh, it's about the autism spectrum disorder. And I know that you kind of went, just went over it a little bit. And I know you're going to talk about it a little bit more in a slide or two as well.
I asked that question, Dan, and
I see that.
I have a grandnephew, you know, who's autistic. And only recently have I learned the phrase autistic spectrum, just as you described it, that it can be high-functioning or low-functioning. And I think it's something that many of us don't have enough knowledge about. And your explanation just now was excellent. So thank you. And I look forward to whatever else you, you were able to help us understand.
And that's the thing, is it is different with every person, every person who has autism. Like I said, if you know a person with autism, you know a person with autism. Everybody is a little bit different. And I think a lot of us didn't know what autism was a few years ago. And I've been in this field since nineteen ninety-three. And what they started seeing is a huge rise in the number of autism cases, starting in the late nineteen nineties. And it's continuing to this day. Now, there is some, there, there are some questions as to whether or not it was just underdiagnosed in the past. But I will tell you that most of the research is showing that it isn't about being underdiagnosed, that we are truly seeing a sharp rise in the number of autism cases. I can honestly say that when we look at some of our participants who've been with us for a very long time, yes, they were not diagnosed with autism, but we can look at some of the behavioral characteristics. We could look at some of the, some of the things that they do and sort of see that, yeah, you know what, this probably a, there's probably an underlying diagnosis of autism, but that's rare. We are seeing a huge increase in autism. Now, we could get into the why is that happening? And I can be honest with you, nobody really knows for sure why it's happening. There's lots of different theories and so forth. So it's not something that we necessarily get into is determining why it's happening, but we get into the how we can help and what we could do to treat the individual and treat the family and to assist everybody in this. So autism, excuse me, is on the rise. And I think it's amazing, just in my career, it was back in the early nineties, it was, I can't remember specifically, but it was like one in three hundred some odd individuals. And then it shot to one in sixty-six. And now it's, now they're estimating one in fifty-four people that being born nowadays are being diagnosed with a diagnosis of autism. So it's sort of shocking and surprising. And I will tell you that most of the referrals now, because it started in the nineteen nineties, we serve adults. Most of the referrals that we're getting that are coming out of the high school system are individuals with a diagnosis of autism now. And Joe can attest to that and talk, talk about that a little bit later when we talk about our programs. But I want to give you a brief history of our organization. In the beginning, this is what our campus actually looked like when Los Trumpus started. But before Los Trumpus started, there was a woman named Helen Lucas, who ran a school there for children with developmental disabilities, starting in nineteen thirty-eight, on the same grounds in Los, in Lafayette, that we currently operate. Helen Lucas was a rarity in her day. She was able to work with people. And primarily in those days, it was trisomy twenty-one or Down syndrome. The children with Down syndrome that she was working with, who also had an intellectual disability. And the reason that she opened this school is there was a lot of stigma about developmental disabilities back in the day. And a lot of parents either didn't know how to deal with it, or there was a lot of, there was a lot of stigma in the fact that people thought, oh, there was something wrong with you if you have a child with, with a developmental disability. And we can go back, this is nineteen thirties, there was a huge movement, not just in Europe, but also in the United States, called eugenics. And that was talking about the purest of the pure. And if people found out that you had something wrong in your family, you better hide it away. And that's exactly what a lot of people did, is they moved their children into an institutional setting and put in like a twenty-four-hour setting. And the institutions were really big, but a lot of families didn't feel comfortable with the traditional institution. So Helen Lucas was one of those people who was kind and caring and started this live-in school for children with developmental disabilities. However, she got sick. And by nineteen fifty-eight, she was no longer able to actually run her program. And the parents wondered what's going to happen to our children. So they got together with the community and bought her out and started Los Trumpus School. And Los Trumpus School is named for the creek, Los Trumpus Creek, that runs right along our property. And anybody know what Los Trumpus actually means? Las Trampas is Spanish, and it's sort of unfortunate. Las Trampas means the traps in Spanish, but we have to remember that California was Mexico. And this was a hunting region. And in this area, Las Trumpas, that meant this is where we set our traps, this is where we hunted, and so forth. So little, little trivia there. So they founded Los Trumpus in nineteen fifty-eight and realized we have a lot of people being referred to our programs, and how are we going to serve all of them? And what the families did is they raised enough money and worked with the state of California and got a huge grant to build a brand-new campus for their live-in school for children with the developmental disabilities. And in nineteen sixty-eight, that state-of-the-art new facility was built with big dormitory buildings and classrooms, all for children with developmental disabilities. It was a very unique and ahead-of-its-time type of atmosphere then. It was where children with developmental disabilities weren't put in a, in a state institution, but they were able to, excuse me, live their lives amongst each other in a setting that was, you know, tranquil, peaceful. I don't know how many of you have been to the Los Trumpus campus. It's a beautiful, beautiful area. And these children lived on campus and went to school on this campus during that entire time. Now, what's also very important to our history, and I just lost my screen here. What's important to our history is to understand what was happening along those lines. In nineteen sixty-eight is when they started the school. And one year later, Assembly Member Frank D. Lanterman introduced legislation to the state of California. And it was, what he introduced was passed in nineteen sixty-nine, known as the Lanterman Developmental Disability Services Act. And here in California, we are the only state in the United States that actually has an entitlement program that says that people with developmental disabilities will receive services, and the state of California will pick up the bill. No other state has that. While there are services in other states, and some of that funding comes down from the federal government, there's no guarantee that you can actually get in to a program. This act says, yes, we will make programs available to you, and we will fund those programs. Then shortly thereafter, in nineteen seventy-three, the Rehabilitation Act came into place, which started talking about vocational opportunities for people with disabilities, and not just developmental disabilities. And then in nineteen seventy-five, and this was a game changer for Los Trumpus. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, was passed in nineteen seventy-five at the federal level. And what that ended up meaning was that all people with a developmental disability or any disability had the right to attend public schools. And the public school system must pay for it. And they have that right. If you have a developmental disability, they have that right up through the age of twenty-two. So suddenly, the funding for schooling and the public, it was now pushed towards the school districts. And here, Los Trumpus was running this private school this whole time. Now, all these children needed to be moved off of the campus or start going off-campus to the public school system. And it was a big shift for the organization. We still ran the residential portion of it, but we were no longer providing the school portion of, of practices. Through that time, there was a huge movement, and I'll get to that in a little bit, about people having their own homes and people moving away from institutional, or even Los Trumpus at the time, was a mini-type of institutional setting, to move away from congregate settings and more into the community. And through that, started realizing not everything was accessible. And the Americans with Disabilities Act was finally passed in nineteen ninety, making sure that facilities were accessible to the people that we serve. And all the way up through today, we are fighting for our funding. The Lanterman Act is actually under, I wouldn't say it's under attack, but its longevity is questionable because of state funding and state cuts. Although, we might have some good news coming around the corner, that the state is going to fully fund our programs again soon. But the big fight right now is pushing with the legislature, who is making proposals to fund us, but making sure that the governor signs off on those proposals. So it leads us to where we are today, community participation. People with developmental disabilities, back when Los Trumpus first started, it was more of one of, it was more of a concept of better, better not seen. We know it exists, but keep, keep people with disabilities out of view. To now, people with disabilities have a right to be a part of their community and should be a part of their community. And we are very proud at Los Trumpus to ensure that the people that we serve are not just seen in the community, but are also a part of the community, that they contribute to the community. And Joe's going to talk about some of the things that we do to contribute to, that our participants contribute to the community as well. So I will actually hand it over to Joe, Joe Cashel. You might want to talk a little bit about your history a little bit, Joe. Amazing person, who is started with our residential and now is overseeing our day programs. So Joe, take it away.
So like Dan said, my name's Joe Cashel. I oversee, I've overseen our residential program for maybe five or six years now. And I started as a house manager when I first started with Los Trumpus about eight years ago. And then just recently, over this last year, I've taken the reins of our day program services as well, and our program there. So at least for my portion today, I'm going to talk a little bit about our program. So again, like Dan said, if you guys have any questions, if you feel to interject or, or you'll throw a chat up, and I'll answer any questions you guys have. So the first thing we're going to talk about was our residential program. Like I said, this is where I really started off. It is kind of my baby, if you will, within the, within the, within our agency. We've seen a lot of changes in just the eight years that I've been with the, with the Los Trumpus. Historically, we did start this in the seventies. The residential model for Los Trumpus was, began then. This is like Dan said, when deinstitutionalization began, and people were coming out of those, those placements and needed to find homes in the community. So we were lucky enough to be one of the front-runners in this, to get some homes started, to get people out of the communities. And some of those, some of those people were the same people that we had served as children that had grown up by that time as well. So that was kind of cool, because we were able to see some people really through their, almost their whole lives. So our, our residential facilities are licensed through community care licensing. So there's certain regulations and laws that we have to follow. We can have up to, up to six beds. Our two homes that we operate are four-bed homes. Each person has their own individual space. And, and we also, the homes that we developed are community placement program homes, which were developed with higher levels of support in place, higher staffing ratio, ratios, more professional consultants, like a psychiatrist and dietitian and behaviorist, to help us kind of manage some of the more difficult aspects of serving these individuals. You know, these people were in, in an institution, and oftentimes, not for no reason. You know, they were difficult to serve. And, you know, in traditional residential facilities, they would have been unsuccessful. So our programs have those extra supports to, to kind of, you know, make them successful in the community. And we've been really proud of our success rate with those people that have come out of the, of the state homes. I spent a lot of time up in Sonoma Developmental Center, kind of, kind of, you know, getting to know these people and bringing them into our community and into our homes. And I take a lot of pride in being able to take eight people out of those, out of those institutions, because they were just not great places to be. So like I said, we have our two homes. Sheila House is, is our home for the women. And Maureen House is our home for the men. Both are located in Pleasant Hill. We have had other homes over the years, but due to those budget cuts that Dan was mentioning earlier, we have had to, you know, cut some homes while starting other homes. And we've had to evolve over time to really be able to maintain those services. I think we can go to the next slide. So Supported Living Services are similar to residential services in the sense that we are there most of the time. We are working with them on, you know, really every aspect of their life, from, you know, what they eat every day, what, helping them get dressed and get ready for the day, helping them clean and do their chores, helping them budget and shop, helping them manage their medications and just their medical, you know, all their medical needs. So those are things in the services that we really provide in those, in those types of programs. Supported Living Services is a little different, though, in the sense that it is their own home. We were one of the initial agencies to start the Supported Living Services Program in California, I think in, was it the eighties you said down here? And I think the late eighties. So, you know, we're, we're really, really proud of that as well. We were, you know, kind of handpicked of just a few people to start this program. And we've been operating it ever, ever since. There are five main principles of Supporting Living Services. Again, a one, a home of one's own. So again, this, like our group homes are owned by us. You know, we own the home, and we almost kind of rent out the rooms to the people. These are homes that they either own themselves, maybe a family member, you know, helped them purchase it, or it's a, or it's a, an apartment that they rent, just like anybody else would. And we just go to their home and provide services within their home. And of course, we take them out of the community as well, and can do things in the community, too. It's also very self-directed. There's a lot of choice. They get to determine what they're working on and what they're doing each day. And, you know, if they don't want to wash the dishes that day, you know, they're not really washing it. If that's not a goal they want to work on, then that's not what we're working on with them, even if it may be something they need to work on.
I know I don't wash my dishes every day. I have that choice, and we should respect them and let them have that choice as well.
And that, and that really is what it boils down to, is, is, is really, there's a push currently with person-centered thinking, really across all programs, where it's, it's, it's very much about treating people like adults, you know. They are adults, and yeah, they have a disability, but that doesn't mean they, they aren't capable of making choices and making decisions for themselves. Maybe some people need help along the way, but that's what we're here to do. Relationships is another big principle, really just fostering relationships and creating relationships, kind of natural relationships, you know, with the local, maybe the, the shopkeeper at the local corner store, maybe it's family members, you know, maybe it's physicians and doctors, you know, anywhere from personal relationships to professional relationships, where they're to kind of foster those relationships and help them create those things. Really, you know, in an effort to embed them in their, in their communities. And then community membership is, is a huge one, like being an active member of the community, giving back to the community. And, and you know, and that can be done in a lot of different ways, whether it's like a literal membership that you're joining an organization, maybe like, like, maybe like you guys, you know, joining a church or being part of the church, you know. Maybe like, like, maybe like you guys, you know, joining a church or being part of the church, you know? Um, so that's really what community membership is about. Um, and then uh, and then it's really about flexible tailored services. Like we said, it's all about choice and self-directed. Um, kind of, kind of services. So uh, they really need to be flexible and tailored for the individual and the specific person that we're working with. I think we're good, Dan. Now, Independent Living Services is a little different. Uh, this program really serves. Our kind of more higher functioning individuals. These are people that have a job, you know, they might have their own kids, you know, they got a mortgage, you know, they have reas. They have like legit responsibilities. And we have to, we go in there and we don't, you know, in Supported Living and in residential, we're typically in those homes. Most like all day long, you know, twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days, we have somebody on the floor helping out in most cases. With Independent Living Services, it's very, it's very specific to the need. So like it says, there's thirteen core areas that we focus on with Independent Living Skills. Money management is an example of one of them. So if somebody, you know, has mu- issues with money management, maybe they overspend or they can't budget appropriately. You know, will be kind of assigned or tasked with going in there and giving them those skills. Uh, so we won't be with them twenty-four seven, but we will maybe spend a certain kind of predetermined number of hours monthly with the person. Uh, to work on this specific issue that they have. And you know, some people have one issue, other people have three or four things that we're working on that require some more hours. So again, it's very individualized. Specific to the person that we're working with. This is really, it's really an emphasis on skill acquisition. And, and with this one more than any of our other ones, we're trying to work ourselves out of a job. You know, we're trying to get in there, get them the skills and get out and let them do their thing and be as independent as possible. Okay, Dan, now you're good. So the Adult Development Program or our day program, um, as it's often referred to, this is kind of like our school or work day. If you will, it's kind of Monday through Friday, nine to three o'clock. Uh, people come to us and they get a variety of instruction and support. Um, you know, there's anything from, like it says here, you have activities of daily living. So people might be learning how to wash their hands a little bit better. Um, there's pre-vocational training. We don't have a true vocational program where we're helping people get jobs. But we really kind of test the waters. We let people dip their toe in the vocational pond to see if it's something that they would like. And if it is, we will refer them to a more appropriate organization for them. Uh, we do have a lot of volunteer uh opportunities as well. Uh, I think somebody mentioned earlier that they, they see us kind of beautifying the, the parks and whatnot. And that is one of our, our volunteer opportunities that we have, where people go out and clean up the parks uh in the, in the local area here.
Uh, that's actually, that's actually a paid job.
Oh, is it a paid job? Okay.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm pretty new to day program, so. Um, so yeah, we do have a few uh paid opportunities, that is one apparently. And the other one is, um, you know, they actually do some cleaning and kind of housekeeping around our own facilities, around our offices and stuff. Um, so there are, and we have a, a shred program as well. So if you ever need shredding done, come to Los Trumpus and drop the box off. Uh, I hear it's pretty cheap. Um. Uh, we also work on social skills, um, so just kind of teaching kind of appropriateness in social settings and social situations. Uh, that is a huge thing, especially like Dan was mentioning with autism. Um, you know, uh sensory is a big thing with autism, but social skills is another huge thing with autism that is often pretty common across the spectrum. Is that social skills sometimes are, are lacking or, or are difficult for the person to learn and to understand. Um, and sometimes they are for me too, so I get it a little bit. But um, but yeah, so we'll, we'll work on those types of things as well.
Um, yes, Joe has his, Joe has his own social skills training program. He comes into my office once a week and we talk about his social skills.
Um, and then you have uh self advocacy and this, this often boils down to communication. Uh, we have a lot of people that have issues or, or difficulties communicating. Uh, what we often see is, is really great receptive communication, but not the best expressive communication. So self advocacy for us anyway at Los Trumpus often has to do with trying to teach people how to communicate better. Whether that's through language and expanding their language, um, or through uh, you know, picture communication. And sign language and all these different types of ways to communicate. Um, it's also sometimes just about choice, you know, they have this. Um, th- their experience star, which is I think the term that they use. Where a lot of people with developmental disabilities have not had the same opportunities that we have. Have had throughout our lives to experience new things and different things. So self advocacy is sometimes just about experience and things. So you get to know yourself better and, and learn about what you like and don't like. Uh, and then community inclusion, we kind of talked about with the, that with the other program, just being a part of the community is, is a huge deal. Um, like Dan said, traditionally it was shunned, we, you know, these people were shunned i- into the, into the kind of shadows of our society and. Uh, you know, and there's a huge push for us to make them more inclusive. Um, you know, cuz we, we really truly believe that it's only gonna better our society. You know, it's gonna be a benefit for them, but it's gonna be a benefit for our communities as well. Uh, and then we also deal with things like personal hygiene, medical support, you know, assisting with those types of things uh during day program hours as well. Right now, we're offering alternative service, alternative services. Um, due to COVID obviously, uh so you know, like many of the schools, uh we shut down um shortly after. Um, you know, the state of emergency went up last year. And since then, um fortunately, we've been able to maintain our funding while providing alternative services. Um, instead of having to kind of just shut down completely. Um, so that's helped us stay afloat while being able to provide services, you know, virtually for, for the individuals that we, that we serve. Um, currently, we're, we're offering. Basically hourly, hourly classes, um nine to, starts at nine AM, ends at three o'clock. Every hour, there's another class. And um. And yeah, the, the individual, some of them we've actually seen really thrive in that environment. I don't know if it's because of sensory issues and maybe there's a little less of that and they're more controlled, uh but it's actually been really interesting to see. How many we, how many people would be successful uh in that type of um, you know, with that type of learning.
Um, speaking of COVID, speaking of COVID, yeah. You wanna talk about this? You wanna talk about this, Joe?
Uh, uh, maybe, maybe you can interject here, but um, but yeah, I mean, you know. We obviously COVID has impacted everybody significantly, um, and you know, we were one of those right at the, at the gate, one of those essential services. Especially in places like our homes and Supported Living Services where we're, you know, we're where their caregiver, you know, we're helping them cook their dinner. And if it wasn't for us. You know, they wouldn't have had dinner, you know, so. Um, you know, as Dan says here, our staff have been heroes. You know, some of our staff have contracted COVID. To provide services for the individuals, you know, that we serve during an outbreak. Um, fortunately, we have done a great job at mitigating the spread of COVID throughout our facilities. Um, uh, but we have had uh three outbreaks in our homes and um. And you know, many staff were affected by that. Um. Like I said, fortunately, um, it was relatively minimal, um, you know, as far as outcomes are concerned around that, everybody, everybody made it. Um, you know, no real hospitalizations or anything like that. So uh, we were really lucky and feel very fortunate to have kind of. Uh, you know, gotten this far without anything really drastic happening. Um, and I'm really proud of my staff for being able to. Really, really isolate and mitigate the spread, you know, this last outbreak that we had only went to one person. It wasn't even really a true outbreak. One person tested positive and, and no one else did. So uh, that could just kind of reassures to me that we're, we're following all those safety rules. And, and really being careful while we're working. Um.
We have, we have, we partnered with the, we partnered with the county and created a vaccine, uh, some vaccination clinics. Where we have actually been able to get ninety-nine percent of the participants that we serve, um, vaccinated at this point. So we're very happy for that. And obviously that means that we are soon going to be returning to limited onsite services. Uh, for our day program participants. They are so excited and we're very excited. Um, however, we have to be very cautious because as we know, this COVID thing has been sort of a slippery uh, slippery deal. In, out, uh, yada, da, da, da. But we couldn't have made it this far without our uh community. Uh, chipping in as well. In the beginning, it was very rough. Um, we had, we ran food drives and people were bringing us food, PPE, uh, et cetera, to keep staff and everybody safe. And when Joe talks about those um outbreaks that we had, we're talking about uh impact of maybe four people at a time. As uh, on an outbreak out of those three. So we've actually, out of our staff and our participants. Um, less than, it, I think it's probably close to only five percent uh have actually. Uh, caught COVID. Everybody's made it out safe. Yay. Um, and we're not seeing, uh, we're not seeing the spread as we did uh for a while there. But you know, our living programs had to continue. We're, we're, we can't just stop providing services to the people that we serve. And our staff are very much heroes. Um, so. Yay, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, which is really a great thing. Um, and it. Where we are today with person-centered approach.
Yeah. So as Dan said, we are uh restarting our day program services, like other services really haven't stopped. Um, and uh, day program will be starting, uh basically people are just gonna be coming two days a week. Um, and uh, you know, hopefully in, in time, we'll be able to, you know, increase that either the number of people that we're serving. Some people are opting to just continue doing virtual services uh until later date, until it's a little safer. Um, and we're just trying to work with everybody, again, very individualized. Um, to kind of meet people where they're at and serve them if we can and uh try to do it in as safe ways as we possibly can. Um.
Uh, real quick, uh, Mary, um, you are absolutely right. It's one of my absolute favorite documentaries. There is a documentary. About the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act called Crip Camp. Um, on Netflix, I believe you can still search it. It is phenomenal. It is really phenomenal. And what's really amazing is that movement really started out of the East Bay. Um, Berkeley is very well known for its advocacy, um, for people with uh disabilities of all types. So uh, I just wanted to give a shout out, Mary. That was uh absolutely spot on. Um, Joe, I'm gonna move on because I know we're running a little bit uh, running a little bit long, um, but.
We are a long-winded group.
Yeah, we're, we're, we've been around since fifty-eight. We have a lot to talk about, but uh quickly, we'll talk about our future. Things are looking bright for us. Um, right before, uh, when I first started with the organization, one of the first things I said was. Going through the facility was, all of this deferred maintenance is not acceptable. We can't have rooms that are raining inside when it's raining outside for the people that we serve. And these buildings were built well before the ADA and they need an absolute upgrade. And the people we serve deserve a lot more. So right before the pandemic, we started tearing down our buildings. Um, to build a totally new state-of-the-art facility. And Mike is on here. Mike is not only our board president, but Mike is also our. Let's see, Capitol Campaign co-chair with his wife Connie. He is also our infrastructure committee. Um, uh, uh, chairperson. And Mike is a retired architect and Mike um has been with us since the beginning of this. And uh, Mike, if you would like, if you want to chime in on anything.
Well, um, Dan says I'm retired, but I wonder about that. Um, I found a new occupation here and I couldn't be happier. Uh, I, I often look at the, sort of the chance meeting of myself and. Los Trumpus seven years ago as, as being a gift actually, finding out about the planning of this project. And um, it's, it's been so fulfilling. One, learning about Los Trumpus, which you are, all are today and, and being totally immersed in the. How we can improve our services to all of our very needy participants. And um, what we're gonna wind up with is a facility that's not only state of art, it's gonna take us the next fifty years. And we're gonna be able to expand all of our programs and hopefully take the load off the waiting list of people that. Exist out there that need the services we provide. So um. I, I, as board president, um, working with Dan, his staff, Joe, the other. People involved with the programs is, it's, it's amazing and I, I couldn't even begin to explain how committed. Um, everyone associated with Los Trumpus and our programs is, it's uh. It's a miracle and uh. I uh, thank you, Dan. I mean, you've really done a good job of, of walking everyone through what, what it is Los Trumpus is all about.
So we, it, it, thank you for that, Mike.
And thank you, Father John.
Yes.
For uh getting us on your last agenda.
So as you can see in the pictures here, we started tearing down those old dilapidated buildings, um. They had a lot of that A word in there, asbestos. So I mean, it's great to get rid of this and really build a new building. You can see the slab being poured there. And if you look at the very bottom left, you see the slab was being poured when we had that really big smoky, it was red outside, the whole works. Um, and the walls started going up and then you could see on the next slide, um, the. Uh, where they're starting to lay the foundation for the second floor of this building. And here you can see that uh, this is more recent, where you can see the siding going on the uh, uh, outside of the. Uh, second floor of the building. Um, and this entire facility will be ADA compliant and more so than just ADA compliant. We're looking at. All of the needs of the individuals that we serve, that you don't have to have handrails to be ADA compliant in all ways. But we have people who are visually impaired. We have people who need those handrails. So we have that. We have a, a full spectrum lighting system for people with autism, so they are not irritated. And we can also adjust the temperature and the tone of the lighting in the room. We have a product called Acoustablock going on the interior walls to prevent sound from going from room to room. To minimize that sensory, uh, those sensory issues. We also have transition spaces which make it easy for people with um, with autism or developmental disabilities. To understand what each it space and area is, so they're like non-visual cues. To uh, or they're visual cues, but they're, it's not like a sign that says, hey, turn this way. But you see a specific color and that color might mean that this leads to an outdoor area. Or a color might be associated with an office-type space, or a color might be associated with a classroom. Um, lots of wonderful technology going into this building. And here is a look at what that building will look like when it is done. We're very happy about this turnabout space, cuz if any of you had been to our old campus, there was. Room for maybe one or two vans to unload, load and unload at a time. And it wasn't really ADA compliant. Uh, people would get rained on. Um, it was sort of awful and now we have the ability to load and unload five vehicles at a time. And get people in and out of the facility much quicker. In addition to that, this facility is going to allow us to expand. Uh, the number of people that we serve from seventy individuals to a hundred and fifty individuals. Additionally, out of that seventy, we can only serve fifteen who are considered non-ambulatory or who, or who require. Um, assistive devices to uh ambulate. Now we're gonna be able to move that up to five zero, fifty individuals that have ambulation issues. So it's an amazing, amazing facility. So much has gone into it. We have uh excellent architects, excellent um. Construction crew. We are just super thrilled. And here's another opportu- uh, another uh visual of what the outside of this building is gonna look like. And as you can see, it's not just about the building, it's also about the grounds. Um, as Joe mentioned earlier, it's about community inclusion. At any given time in our, in our program day, fifty percent of the individuals are out in the community. Um, away from the facility at any time. This is really just sort of a hub. For people to gather and to learn their skills and then go out in the community and, and, and practice those skills out there.
And we hope that the community will come into our space a little bit too.
Yes, that, and yeah, it's gonna be an interchange. Um, and this is uh along the creek side, uh to the right is where the creek is, but. Um, you see here that it's an extension of the classrooms. So there's classroom space outdoors as well, and that's really great for people with autism. Um, and I know we're running a little bit long, but we've done a pretty good job of raising most of the money needed. We're about three hundred and ninety. We're about three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars away from our twelve point nine million dollar project. We are, to get there, we're hoping that we can sell enough pavers, um and these pavers are going to thousand dollar paver. Uh for an eight by eight gets, uh, what is it? Uh, you can have your name put on a paver and it'll be in that area that's underneath the canopy. Or a sixteen by sixteen for um for uh three thousand dollars. And I'm sorry if we ran a little bit long, but a huge thank you to all of you uh for listening to us. And um and Father John, thank you for inviting us and thank Kelly for us for scheduling this. And Kristoff for giving me the ability to share this with everybody. And if there's any questions, we're here to answer them. I see that, I see Martha says that Crip Camp is still on Netflix, yay.
Uh Dan, Joe and Mike, uh I can't thank you enough personally. Uh for a, and an enlightening presentation and a thorough presentation about an organization. That has had longstanding uh presence, yeah, but almost a hidden presence. The, you know, uh St. Perpetual has been around since nineteen fifty-two. And again, it's one of the older uh organizations, service organizations uh in in our area. But so have you, um I guess one of my main thoughts is. We, I, are any of these members of St. Perpetual Catholic Community? And if not, then why not? And what has been the church connection? Uh, you know, with the members of the Los Trumpus community? And if there's anything that we can do to evangelize and do outreach, um we we do, we need to do that. I want to thank Kelly Daggs for being a conduit and connecting us. Uh, you know, our our presentations over the last uh year, fourteen months, fifty-two presentations. Well, I I did some funny things with Youtubes, so we tickled the funny bone. And we've had a lot of, uh you know, wonderfully intellectually and artistically stimulating presentations. But but you touch our hearts and um and that's uh what we want and and what we need. Uh especially at this time. Um, I I just want to make mention of some people that join us weekend and week out. Uh who are not members originally of St. Perpetual Community and yet have been part of our virtual community. And Gina Drakes, it's always good to have you with us and um and Mel DeFotis, who uh. Ramona Davis, good friend from Chicago, who has joined us on a number of occasions, it's really always good to to see you. Like, I just, I'm thrilled that that.
Can I just make one more offer? Um, we, we try to be at Los Trumpus, kind of a resource as well. So I know that somebody mentioned that they had, you know, some uh grandson with a developmental disability with autism. You know, if if you're trying to navigate the system or if you have family that are trying to navigate the system and you're just having a hard time with it, because they don't make it easy sometimes. Please reach out to us and let us know, we'll try to coach you and and walk you through the process as much as we can. Um, so if you're, you know, if you ever have any personal kind of connection with anybody with a developmental disability and you need any type of resources. Uh, we might just refer you to someplace else, but we can at least, um, you know, give you, give you a little bit of, you know, a starting place anyway.
Great, I think one other thing that might be um helpful for us is if you can let us know. Are there volunteer opportunities uh for members of the community?
There, under, under traditional circumstances outside of COVID, there had, there have always been volunteer opportunities. We are actually looking at this year re-engaging with our um. Our big gala uh next spring. Uh, there's lots of volunteer opportunities in regards to setting up those types of events. We are planning on actually having a grand opening event, we need volunteers to help with the planning of that. We do uh offer volunteer opportunities to work with the individuals that we serve in the day program type setting as well. Uh, we did uh have at one time a uh volunteer who was a speech and language pathologist. Who helped us out for quite a while, which was really sort of awesome. Um, so anybody who has skill in these particular areas, plus if you have a skill or a, you know, a passion. Let's say you love to sew and you want to come in and show the people that we serve how to sew. We can set up those classes, if you love dance or exercise or yoga. Yeah, come on in, that's where Joe was saying, we would really love the community to come in as well as us reaching out of the community. So there's lots of different types of opportunities, you can get ahold of myself. Or Joe, and our information was on that slide. Um, but um our phone number is nine two five two eight four. One four six two, or you can visit us at losttrumpus.org and uh all of our contact information is there on our website.
In addition to the, those volunteer opportunities, uh we've recently, uh it's not like a formal program, but we're kind of hoping to grow it. We've recently had a volunteer approach us and we kind of created almost like a big brothers, big sisters kind of relationship with her and and another individual. So if somebody's looking for that type of a thing where they're kind of be creating a real relationship with maybe just one individual. That's something that we might be able to to kind of work out as well, um you know, that little extra attention, that little one-on-one time that somebody. Uh can be really beneficial for for really both, both parties, really.
Well, I hope we can find out more about those volunteer opportunities and offer them. Uh, you know, we've got a large parish community and outreach and. The corporal works of mercy are certainly a, you know, a core of who we are as a faith community. Um, and um I want to reserve one of those pavers that has, so we can have St. Perpetual's name. Thank you, part of our, you know, the foundation for your wonderfully new uh project. Having just completed a major uh capital campaign for a new community center, which we haven't been able to use for the past fourteen months. Uh, we appreciate the work that goes into those campaigns. And uh I want to assure you that we want to be a a part and will contribute uh to yours. Well, again.
That's very generous of you and.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much on that.
Uh, Dan, Joe and Mike, um, we, you, you have inspired us and. And just a reminder, as Jack King told us, that our Knights of Columbus have been a supporter of Los Trumpus for many years.
Yes.
With our Tootsie Rolls sale and uh that's a regular feature. That, but that's why I wanted to have you guys on, because we hear the word La Trumpus, La Trumpus. We see some of the members of La Trumpus, but you have given us the the background and the significance of the work uh that you do. So again, thanks very much and God bless all your efforts and uh the goodness that exudes. Uh from all of you to all of us, so thank you all.